Welcome to the Monday, February 6, 2023, combination public hearing and work session for the Planning Board for the Incorporated Village of Southampton, New York. Can I get a motion to open?
I'll move that we open the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Before we get down to business, I want to welcome Mark London, the gentleman sitting to my right. He is Jane Clare's replacement, and we look forward to working with him in the future. Longtime village resident, so everybody do everything they can do to help Mark along in the process.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Also, I would like to thank everyone for their patience in the delay.
So would I.
So I just want to confirm with Alex that because we have a public hearing on for tonight that's going to probably take up most of our time. Fifty-one Pond Lane is still not before us, correct?
Correct, so we don't, there's a pending application for site plan review, as you know, and we have not heard any update on that, how I'd like to proceed. So we'll probably be looking forward to adjourn that to a future meeting pending any.
Okay, great, then we can move right to the public hearing for 550, 554 Hill Street. I just need some advice on how to proceed. Does the counsel for the applicant start?
Sure, I would suggest that, I believe the applicant is here by counsel. And the thought could be that they could present with questions followed by the board, and then the matter could be open to the public after that.
Great.
I believe we have that at the beginning.
Yes.
Okay, everything's, okay, the posting was done?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Bailey Larkin with Bennett and Reed offices at 212 Windmill Lane in Southampton. On behalf of the applicants, this is a public hearing related to a final subdivision application to permit subdivision of two parcels into three residential lots. Dimensional relief was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals by a decision grant adopted on October 26 of 2017, and a resolution granting sketch plan approval was adopted by this board on July 2, 2018. We have been working with the board at work sessions to address some comments that had been raised with respect to submissions pursuant to the conditions of the sketch plan approval. We've submitted a landscape plan, grading and drainage, and retaining wall details for the proposed access driveways, and a plan demonstrating that all properties will accommodate installation of IA wastewater systems. Since this sketch plan approval was granted, we've also been before the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation and have received approval to demolish the two residences and the warehouse on these two parcels. This is a three-lot subdivision. Two of the proposed lots would take access off of Hill Street with one lot taking access by easement off of a residential property on Captain's Neck Lane. Since I think there's a lot of public interest, I don't have much to say. I would assume the board would like to take public comment on this.
Do any of the board members have any questions for counsel before we move on to the public?
I don't.
Yeah, I have only a question with your phrase, which I didn't hear, that we approved, was the phrase, the subdivision. When I was a member of this board at the time that it went from us to the Zoning Board of Appeals, we approved it by granting relief from the environmental study. We did not approve the subdivision that we were advised by counsel in, which is a different counsel to this board, would come back to us, that we were not approving the subdivision. Your phrase is, and John, one of your partners used that phrase before, and I told him that we didn't do it, we were advised by Mr. Robinson that we weren't approving. We get to act now on the subdivision. It's the authority of the Zoning Board of Appeals to make zoning changes for a subdivision like this, which is a significant one for the block that's involved. We still have a say, which we can, who knows how our concerns will go, but it was not approved as a subdivision with the three that went, was finally was the final version that went over for the board with deliberation for many features of it by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's a long speech, because I don't have your phrase here in front of me, or I'd read it to you literally.
Just, just to be clear, pursuant to the resolution that was adopted by this board in July, the Planning Board quote approves the sketch plan for 550 Hill Street LP and 554 Hill Street LP.
It was approved for purposes of a negative declaration for secret. But we didn't approve it for the other purposes for zoning, and this is a fine legal point, but we were advised, and the question was raised by the then-chairman of the board and some of us, was this an approval for all these, or would it come back to us and we were told, no, no, it's the secret? What is, what is on the table for secrets approved, but not the redefinition of the lots? And I raise the point, if it's wrong, maybe a majority of this board will feel that this is not the case, and I know that it's a matter of interpretation of what went and what came. Since the same advisor was advising both of the boards as many issues that were in both of the applications, the boards have two different duties in the view of many people that looked at it then and heard advice then and studied independently. The duties aren't the same. What the ZBA does and what this board does are different in terms of the mandate of the law, so that's why I raise the point. It's the phrasing, it's what was done and what's yet to be done. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that is the phrase.
I have a few questions as well. I mean, we, the board approved a sketch plan of some sort, I wasn't here for that, but that is a sketch plan, and then the details of the actual subdivision plan are what we're going to be ruling on eventually. So, you know, questions, my questions as to those details really have not been answered. One of them is the shared driveway, and your office presented something, an example of a shared driveway with all of the covenants and restrictions included in it, but the one that you had in front of this board didn't include any of those, that language, which in my understanding is language that's required to make that illegal shared driveway, that not only the heirs of the applicant, but any, you know, owners down the road would be bound by, and so I haven't received.
We have submitted a proposed common driveway agreement for the proposed lot one and two, and an access easement that would be taking over, taking place over 62 Captain's Neck Lane, so we did submit that for review by your counsel.
Okay, so that was newly submitted?
No, it was, it's been submitted since, I believe, December.
I'm sorry, those documents were previously submitted, but I believe as counsel had mentioned on the last date, should this board go forward with any approvals, any type of covenant like that would only be, would be subject to approval of counsel, to the board and the board itself, it would be fully reviewed and vetted before going further.
Okay, because I wanted to make sure that all of those elements, for example, that the pole portion of the lot not be used for vehicular access, and that's something that I would want to look for as a condition, because the property is being marketed as you could use either, you know, Hill Street, or you could use Captain's Neck as a pass-through, whereas I wanted to see language where the pole lot was not going to be used, except for, it's being proposed for, you know, just maintenance, and it shouldn't be, I don't know how wide it is, I don't know if that's marked, you know, we had asked for how wide that would be and whether vehicular access would be permitted, because it shouldn't be for the pole lot, because it's not a legal pole lot since the subdivision.
The documents that we filed with the board allow for access, proposed lot two, which is the secondary lot off of Hill Street, will take access off of Hill Street, proposed lot three will take access by means of an easement off Captain's Neck Lane.
Right, but there's a utility easement in place.
Utilities are separate from vehicular access, but there are specific access easements drafted, and we also submitted utility easements as well.
Right, but there should contemplate, we should contemplate a condition where that cannot be used for vehicular access out to Hill Street, because that would be creating double the traffic for a minor subdivision, and it's not typical to have two driveway access. So if you're going to put, like, the applicant wants an extra road, then that should be the road that accesses the property that is now too small to be a pole lot, a flag lot. So, you know, how wide is that? And then when the issue of putting shrubbery or bushes came up, that was, you know, nixed by the applicant, so they didn't want to put any screening or anything, so, you know, that would prevent that from being a usable road.
Well, we had submitted a landscape plan with the board that provides screening for the adjacent properties and shows what existing vegetation's being maintained. The access easements will not allow lot three to take access by a driveway to Hill Street.
I think the concern would be that in any covenants that they would include language that would say, I know what you're saying, that would say that to the extent there's a utility easement, that it is to be for the purposes of maintenance of utilities only and shall not be used for any type of ingress or egress of vehicular traffic at any point by the taker of the property or anyone that takes thereafter.
That would be completely acceptable, and I think that's how we had drafted our documents that we submitted with the board for review, so.
And the sketch plan has to show how wide that utility easement would be, so I had asked, or we had asked for information on how wide that would be, and then there was the question of plantings there to screen the other properties that are now not, you know, that are separate now from the lot three.
The subdivision, final subdivision plan that we did file includes the dimensions of the proposed utility easement on it, actually is included on there, I believe it's a 10-foot wide strip. And we do have legal descriptions prepared for all of them, showing exactly where those utility easements will be.
That's my recollection as well, are you sure? I thought that it was a four feet, four-foot utility easement.
No, I believe it's, it's 10 feet wide.
Okay, why so wide?
Yeah, that's, that's the issue, is, you know, if it's a utility easement.
It's a trench?
It's within the bed of the road, but the utilities are going to be run within that trench, and so there's three lots gaining the utilities through there for purposes of drafting the easement, and have been drafted as a 10-foot wide utility easement.
But why would lot three need 10 feet?
Probably will not, but it'll be a common utility easement for all three properties.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's, that's not typical, if you have a Captain's Neck address, the typical thing would be for the utilities to be brought in through Captain's Neck, but if they're not, the concern was just that that road be closed off, since it's now gaining a new configuration going out to Captain's Neck, that that would, you know, it'd be foreclosed, that I asked, you know, if you could plant shrubbery or whatever, a screening, so that that's clearly going out to Captain's Neck, and the other two are now Hill Street lots because of the request for reconfiguration and that they're too small to be the flag lot. So it just, 10 feet seems wide that you could continue to use that for, you know, cars, and that it would be an enforcement issue, that was what it was, you know, because right now you can drive in there and drive out, right? And then there's no screening, the applicant doesn't want screening, so it just seems like you can still use that.
Well, the applicant shouldn't be required to screen within a property, whenever these lots are developed in the future, that property owner is going to screen the property as they see fit, and they're not going to, as that center lot in the subdivision, want people driving past their house and accessing another lot, it wouldn't be allowed pursuant to the covenants that are adopted by the board, but the purpose of establishing screening there is unnecessary.
I think what Will is saying is you want a physical barrier to anything, anybody driving through from Captain's Neck, making the turn and going out.
Yeah, well, because originally the application was described as one that was going to have that circular driveway from Hill Street to Captain's Neck, but that's not.
And I think there was a real estate ad at one point advertising it that way, so it's a little confusing.
That law configuration's not typical and not, you know, permitted under the code, so.
And that's not what's before the board this evening, that's not what our final subdivision plan shows.
But it's just, it's typical for the applicant to be asked by the board to do plantings that are, you know, that change the configuration, so it.
I think you're referring to it as screening, and you should refer to it as a physical block.
Barrier, yes.
A physical barrier, because screening.
Yes, a physical barrier.
And also, I think a utility easement isn't necessarily a road, it's just that a trench and lines can be run under there, and there's an allowance over time for any maintenance that might have to happen to those lines, I don't think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not a cleared swath, like, like the utilities would do.
No, it's typically underground electric, gas, water lines, it's not something that's going to be accessed on the regular, unless there's a significant issue, there's not going to be any disturbance.
I would also like to see lot three access its utilities from Captain's Neck. It doesn't seem like that much to ask.
That seems more logical, but if you're, if there's some reason, rational reason, that they're already there, they already exist, to bring them in, it should be a narrow, like, four-foot, and with the provision, you submitted something where the example you used said pole portion of a lot shall not be used for any vehicular access, and that gets filed with the Clerk's Office, you know, and with Suffolk County, so that anyone who is looking at the property in the future to buy, right now it's owned by one party, so that's, you know, but anyone who would go to buy it has to be on notice of what the shared driveway restrictions are, and it has to be described as a condition of the approval, and allowing, you know, lots that are now less than otherwise allowed in that neighborhood, right? So, so as a condition, those have to all be in there, and they're not in there yet, so, I just wanted to bring that up.
They're going to be part of a potential approval?
Yeah, that's what we understood, yeah.
Okay, so I think we're all on the same page. So I wanted to ask a question, and I think this question should be more directed toward counsel than the applicant, but with the village's new comprehensive plan, does that come into play at all in this situation where that, because this approval is dating back to 2017 at this point, the village has gone through a pretty extensive comprehensive planning phase, and I'm just wondering, do we need to look at this subdivision in light of the new comprehensive plan? That's my question.
Sure, so in particular, and for the benefit of counsel, I think that the issue that comes up under the new comprehensive plan is really twofold. It suggests that the village would rather not have developments that would have flag lots, but goes on to say that if there are to be flag lots, that any ingress and egress should be through ownership as opposed to easements. That's, those are the suggestions and the statements contained within the comprehensive plan. Given the board's question, what I would ask to be able to do is, is to research that for you and to respond to the board. I do think it's something that the board will want to consider as to the impact, if any, that has upon a previously approved sketch plan and something that went through the ZBA. To clarify for the board, just by way of history, when this went before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of Zoning was considering several different variances, one of those variances was to allow for two lots that did not otherwise have street frontage, the flag lots, and the board did approve the variances as requested at that time, but I think your question is, but that was with a different plan, those were the different comprehensive plan, does this have any impact? And what I would ask for is the opportunity, given that the question has been raised, to fully research that for you and report back to the board, and your counsel can research that as well.
We would love to respond in writing to that question.
Okay, also, because I also questioned density.
Sure.
Because we're looking at issues of density more than we have in the past, so those are, that's.
Right, and so, and for the interest of transparency, to be clear for the board, I will research that, but I think they're important issues to raise, and counsel can certainly look into that as well as she sees fit.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, so we're ready to open it, open up the meeting to the public hearing part, so when you, if you're here to speak, you would come up to the podium, state your name and what you're here for, and we're going to limit to, comments to around five minutes. And I want to remind everybody that this is, I just want to remind everybody to exercise the rules of civility while they're speaking, please. So, who'd like to go first?
Good evening, board members, excuse me, my name is Jeff Bragman, I'm the attorney for Eric Ruttenberg, the adjacent property owner. Mr. Ruttenberg owns property to the south of 550, 554 Hill Street, and they share a common property line, which would be the edge of the driveway running to Captain's Neck. His, one of his homes has a backyard that faces that property line, as well as a sideyard of his property, and that Captain's Neck driveway, I want to remind the board, it's not just a line on paper, it exists in three dimensions, and there's topography there, and it generally sets out one of the main concerns in this, in your review process, which is that it's got, it's got a slope that runs from a high point on the east down to a low point on the west, which is an obvious path for drainage. And I'm speaking first to present some legal and factual issues of concern, some of which Alan McFarland referred to, alluded to, and I'd like to be followed by Mike Kefir, who is the Director of Civil Engineering at H2N with 35 years' experience and a lot of municipal experience, and also following him, Dr. Chris Goldler, who's probably the leading expert on harmful algae blooms. I do want to ask for some consideration in terms of the time that I will take. We've waited for probably five months, and I cannot finish my presentation in five minutes. I'd be willing to break it in half.
Can I interrupt you for one, for a technical issue? Apparently our recording secretary is not able to hear this meeting.
Oh, no, no, Tony, that was an old message, I can hear it fine.
Oh, okay, sorry, the message just came in, I'm sorry. Please continue.
I'm going to ask the board for some consideration on time. We've waited for probably five months to be able to say anything to you, during which time the applicant has been able to present, literally.
Well, you've waited because we haven't, we did, we only scheduled a public hearing a month ago.
I understand, but you've been, you've been, you've allowed the applicant during work sessions to make full presentations with no comment, no criticism, no questions from, from any of us, so I will, I assure you, I will be efficient with your time, I'm not going to, I'm not, if I'm, I'm not going to blather on here, I've got pretty directed comments to make, but I do ask for some consideration. The relationship between the ZBA decision and the Planning Board is of concern to the board, it's been raised several times, there have been comments that your hands are tied because of what the Zoning Board of Appeals did, they are not tied. The Zoning Board of Appeals takes its authority from New York State Village Law, from a separate chapter of the village, a separate statute of the village law, than does the Planning Board. The arrangement is that the state has enabling laws in two different sections, one for the Zoning Board, one for the Planning Board, they allow the Board of Trustees to set up a Zoning Board and to set up a Planning Board, and then each of those has its own rules of the road. The Zoning Board can give variances and flexibility to the zoning code, but the Planning Board is the only board that can create lots, it has sole and exclusive jurisdiction over subdivisions. If we think of a plot of land as a sheet cake, the Zoning Board can, can figure out, you know, dimensions on that sheet cake, but the only one that can cut the cake and make the lots is the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board has no right to intrude on your authority, and in fact, the Zoning Board has flexible rules, the Planning Board has the opposite, it has fixed policies that subdivisions have to follow. And I want to give you a quote from a case called Marx versus ZBA of Millneck, because it says it pretty succinctly, sometimes the courts do a good job of that. "The function of the Planning Board as to subdivision is the orderly enforcement along fixed standards. The entrance of the Zoning Board into the, into that area of control would not only rupture the statutory scheme, but it would also interrupt the enforcement of policies that are designed by the Planning Board." Now, Mr. Bennett has trumpeted two cases in particular in an effort to convince you that you can't do anything in this case, and I'm going to talk about these two cases. Now, I know as soon as you hear one lawyer say one thing and another, another thing, your eyes glaze over and you go, who knows, who knows who's right, but I want to do this to show that you know the facts, because it makes good sense. In the Pavone case, the two cases are very similar, in the Pavone case, the owner wanted three lots.
Counsel, if you're going to cite cases, can you give the sites, please?
I would have to go to my notes to give them to you, but I can follow up in the meeting.
I asked you to do that.
I'm not giving you the.
I think moreover, we're, we're pretty well-versed on what our responsibilities are and what our jurisdiction is in this.
I want to repeat the law, so you don't just think I'm talking here, I want to repeat these cases, because they make sense.
You're using your time.
They may help, okay? In Pavone, one lot needed a lot with variance, one lot needed a setback variance, the Zoning Board granted them. In Thurmond, the owner wanted two lots and one required a small lot area variance, the Zoning Board granted him. Well, what happened next in both those cases illustrates my point. They went to the Planning Board afterwards, why? Because only the Planning Board can cut the cake. Now, in those two cases, contrary to what the, what the law requires, the Planning Board looked at both of those and said, we're not going to approve those lots because they're not conforming, that's all they said. They did not allude to any of their separate standards for subdivision approvals, and when a court reviewed it, they went, no, you can't do that, you can't just overrule the Zoning Board. That does not mean that you do not have the right to apply all the standards in your subdivision code, the rules of the road on subdivision still apply. So, those rules are set out in Chapter 97, and they, they include many comments about drainage, flooding, septic effluent, clearing, grading, preservation of natural resources, and the procedure of the review that we're in now is controlled by those rules of the road, and I want to give you a little clarity on it, because already Mr. McFarland has raised some questions about what you did or didn't do, and the law is really clear, and I can help you. Village Code 97-7 talks about sketch plans, and a sketch plan is designed so that a developer can reach some kind of general agreement as to his layout objectives, that's what it is. The sketch plan is also supposed to present significant physical features when he gives you that plan, that's Section 97-10B, but where the Planning Board deems it necessary, where it doesn't get the information it needs, it is expressly permitted to make recommendations for additional information that it requires, that it requires to be incorporated into the next submission, the next submission is the final plat, that's what we're dealing with now. And what happened in the February 2018 sketch plan was just that. The Planning Board said that no information had been provided on certain critical issues, and it wanted more, and it required those issues to be presented in the next phase, which is the final plat phase, which is what we're in. The reason I'm, I'm making such a strong point about this is to let you know that this information that the applicant has been telling you, oh, you can't look at, you can't change, this is brand-new information. You, you had, this board, different members of this board, had never seen a driveway profile, they had never seen excavation and fill quantities, they had never seen a retaining wall, steel sheet piling, drainage structures, and drainage calculations, so this is brand-new information.
We're under good counsel, and we're aware of everything that you've wasted your five minutes talking about, so.
Well, I don't think it's a waste, I don't think it's a waste, but I'll.
It's not a waste, but is there something?
Yes, I have.
Where are you getting, because you've got about a minute left, okay?
I'm going to ask you to give me more time, and I'll move on. This, what, the information that you're now dealing with for the first time showed you roadway design, roadway profiles, the drainage plans, the grading plan, a retaining wall on one side, steel sheeting on the other side, they haven't dimensioned how close that driveway comes to my client's property line, but it looks to be about a foot at the most. The earliest remarks by your engineer said he, that the applicant would have to get an agreement from the neighbor to, to have his property disturbed, because it was so close to the property line, so this information is new for the first time. In addition, in addition, something that Alan McFarland has been talking about for years is that the slope of that road and the configuration of the property in general funnels drainage right to a location on the property, it can readily be identified. How can you identify it? It's got six drywells lined up like little soldiers right in a row. You don't put six drywells on a driveway unless you've got a heck of a drainage problem, and that's what's going on there, and it's exacerbated by the fact that there is a slope coming from east to west, and where is it? And where is it going to go? It's directing down toward Captain's Neck, and eventually, it will wend its way to Hetty Creek and the wetlands and the 100-year flood plain.
I thought the slope was from west to east, the, the natural slope as it is now.
No, it's east to west.
It's higher in the east?
It's higher in the east. It's sloping down toward Captain's Neck.
Okay.
Which is why I say, when you talk, you know, there's been a little bit of discussion about the driveway. It's not just a line on paper and where cars are going to come in and come out. The terrain here is the critical, is the critical issue. And after the sketch plan with, with those recommendations was approved, they came in with this information for the first time, and you've had a chance, a chance to look at it. And also, the law is very clear that you have the right to modify the plan. This is new information. It makes sense. You haven't seen it before. But it's right in your code, Village Code 97-33E. After your hearing, you have every right to make changes in this plan. So you're not in any way bound in the way that the applicant has been telling you that you can't do anything about this application. You're free to apply all your subdivision policies. Well, what are they? First of all, I want to say a driveway that needs a retaining wall and 108 feet of steel sheeting, six drywells lined up in a row, and that may be a miscalculation, because if you recall, your engineer early on in this process said he wanted, he recommended three to five inches of rainfall to be calculated. The board agreed to five inches. You wanted the, the higher number because you said the Village of Southampton was experiencing heavier rainfalls. We believe that the calculations were adjusted once, but then unadjusted, and that the current system is not the system that can accommodate five inches of rainfall. And also, the runoff coefficient, runoff is evaluated mathematically. There's a percentage of input that engineers look at, and Mike Kefir will explain it better than I will. There's a percentage that they can calculate is going to runoff. So now, we think that they did not account for a five-inch rainfall and that they lowered the coefficient, they lowered the coefficient of the runoff so that this system is undersized. Now, I just want to talk about the subdivision standards. The subdivision standards require, first of all, in answer to the question.
Sir, Mr. Bennett, just to get a sense here, I know you're asking for additional time from the board, but, but they did ask for only five minutes. How much more time do you think you have, sir? Because.
I think I could do it in 10 minutes. Because it's the only hearing. If you want, I'll, I'll break in half. You can let whoever else wants to talk, and I'll come back. But I have things to discuss with you that I think will assist you in your decision.
You're discussing things with us that are unnecessary to discuss with us. You're discussing, we're under good counsel here. We know.
Let me, let me, let me answer a question that you, that you actually raised of counsel. The question is, what, how does, how does this relate to the objectives of the new comprehensive plan in 2022? And of course, your counsel's research will control. But my suggestion is that right in the code, the code itself indicates in subsection A of 97-2, that the, an objective, an objective of subdivision review is to promote the objectives of the, of the master plan, now called the comprehensive plan. So I would suggest to you that there's no question that the master plan, the comprehensive plan, matters. And as is the case for all law, whatever the law is at the time the case is heard is what the law is. The law is not stagnant. It moves. So that may be a question that I could provide some guidance to you on. It also.
You're not here to guide us, though.
I am, actually.
Our counsel is here to guide us.
I'm, I'm here to help in the decision-making and to compare the facts to the law in a way that I think may clarify it. That's my intention. I'm not trying to boss you around. If you disagree with me, if you think I'm not making sense, you can reject what I say. But I do, but I want to tell a little bit about the law, because it's a roadmap, and it will help you to think about how you have to evaluate the issue, because you're going to have to evaluate, what is the, what does that drainage on that Captain's Neck driveway mean?
Okay. So what I'd like to do is give, I don't want to keep the entire public here for your entire presentation. I'd like to move on to other people, and then you can finish up later, because it's, it's not fair to these people.
That's fine. I'll be happy to do that. I'll come back to talk about the purposes of subdivision.
Just a question, counsel, also as well. Given that what you're talking about is law, and you're comparing it to facts, is that something you're just as easily put in writing and submit to the board?
You know, if, if, if that was the way we did zoning and planning, we would just submit papers. We'd do our decision-making on papers.
Counsel, I'm asking you a question. I'm not asking you to educate me on the purpose of the year.
It's necessary, it's necessary to say it in public, because part of being at a public hearing is having the audience hear what the neighbors have to say and what the lawyers have to say.
No, I appreciate that, but my point was that something submitted in writing will be something that will be available to all, for all to review and comment on. But I appreciate your point.
I will, I will follow, I will follow up on that. I will follow up. If permitted, I'll give you something in writing that hits these points. So I'll, I'll, I, I would ask if my, Kefir, do you want to hear from the public first before you hear from our experts?
You are, you're all public to me. You're not, you're not the applicant here, so.
Honestly, I'm, I'm a neighbor here.
Does it make sense for this person to follow you?
Yeah, I think it does, yeah.
Yeah. How long is your presentation?
I'll do my best to stay in five minutes.
Marco wants to talk.
Good evening, Mike Kefir. I'm with H2N Architects and Engineers, 538 Broadhollow Road, Fourth Flow East, Melville, New York, 11747. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've reviewed the following documents relating to the application, specifically the minor subdivision plans prepared by the Rayner Group in June, dated June 22nd, and October 3rd, 2022. I've also had the opportunity to review technical comment memos on the engineering plans from Nelson &amp; Pope in response to letters prepared by Rayner Group regarding the minor subdivision between February and October 2022. After reviewing these documents, performing a more in-depth review, I offer the following comments. Is this proper? I can move it over here. I know I'm blocking some of the.
Yeah, I just don't, Charles, does this have to be?
It's fine, I'm ready.
It is? Okay. He found it. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So what I'd like to do is share with the board the general topography of the area and the surrounding site, which provides the basis of my points this evening. The exhibit in front of you is a topographic contour map based on public data sources, and the site that the subject property subdivision is outlined in red. For orientation, it's pointing north. Hetty Creek is to the west or to your left. The map shows roughly 2,500 feet north and south. So the site, again, in the red block, just for reference purposes, we were talking briefly about elevations, but the street elevation on Hill Street is roughly 32 feet. By the time you get to the southern end of the property, it's 30 feet. But what happens in between, it's a valley. It drops down to 24 feet, and that's also indicated on the, on the engineering plans. In general, the topography, as you're looking at it, slopes from, from the northeast to the southwest. So it'll be going diagonally across, and that's the way the general terrain runs. Now, the reason I bring that up, and you might be asking, why are, why are the, why is the map colored? The color that you see on the map represents five-foot gradations, meaning if you look down at Hetty Creek in the bottom left, that's elevation zero. And each color increment as you come up from left to right represents five foot of vertical elevation.
But I thought you said there was a valley.
Well, that's only, that's actually on the property.
Oh, on the property, okay.
Yeah.
So the topography is a straight.
Right. So the, so the, so the topography.
Increase from Hetty Creek up to the corner of the property.
And what you see are two interesting things. So Hetty Creek is here, and you notice there's, these, these blue lines represent the drainage, the general drainage pattern of this watershed. And so you have one here that's running down to the headquarters of Hetty Creek. And again, this is, this is Hill Street, just to give reference, in Hazely, Halsey, excuse me, that lane. But the one that I'm talking about, the valley, is, is this right here. So you're up here at elevation 30, you're down at elevation 24, and you raise back up again to elevation 30. And so this is a, a valley that's actually occurring within the development. And that's important. And the other, the other aspect of this, it should be considered, the property to the east, a substantial amount of that property actually runs through this property. So not only do you have water that's, that's going in this valley, but the water from the adjoining property, from Halsey Neck, is coming across. And again, it's following this, this topography, and it's making its way down to Hetty Creek.
Are you referring to surface water? Surface runoff?
Yes, yes, yes.
You don't think it's going to get intercepted by Captain's Neck Lane?
No. Well.
Sometimes.
It could.
It's going to hit a hard surface and start rolling down the street.
Sometimes.
Right, right. So the topography, the purpose of the topography is to show if you have overland relief or a severe storm event, where would water go? Where does water drain?
So each, each shade is five feet. So if I'm 30 in the pink.
Yep.
Anything between pink and the next color down would be between 25 and 30 feet of elevation, right? And then between, like, the darker pink and blue would be 25 to 20. And then blue should be less than 20, correct?
Right. It's.
But you said.
Each increment is five feet down.
Correct.
So this is, this is 45.
Yep. I get, I get you. But that arrow that shows the drainage, you said, was at elevation of 20? Shouldn't that be less than 20?
This, this low spot on the property that we're talking about is at 24. The elevation of Hill Street is 32. The elevation of the southern property line is 30. So if I did a cross.
So north to south, there's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm just trying to understand.
Right. To make, to make the point, the topography is running from Hill Street. The intersection is higher, and it's running diagonally across.
So to make the point, what is your point?
The point is, is that.
It runs downhill.
Is that the drainage is a serious consideration, and it's not just focused strictly on what's going on within the property. So with that said, the main point is that the topography, if you had an extreme storm event, you have to have overland relief. And what is overland relief? It's a safe overflow path for stormwater runoff when stormwater management systems reach capacity. So eventually, this development will have a engineered drainage system. But what happens when it overflows? Well, it's going to go diagonally across an offsite property, developer's property, and run to the Ruttenberg property. And so that's the concern.
And on the ball again, across the screen.
Given the overland relief for stormwater from the subject development, including the adjoining property to the east, could eventually pass through onto the Ruttenberg property. In my opinion, the current plan, as submitted to you, lacks sufficient detail at this time. The plan should show proposed lot grading, location of new impervious areas such as rooftop drainway, accessory structures, and a proposed stormwater management system for the entire development to mitigate any concerns that runoff will not be contained onsite and not impact the Ruttenberg property. The second point I'd like to make regarding what Mr. Bragman referenced regarding the stormwater calculations, I'd like to cover that. So between the June 22nd plan and October 2nd plan, I went back and looked at the storage and the outfall. Actually, I'll, I'll go back to a memo February 18th from Nelson &amp; Pope, and I'll quote on their review of that plan. It said, "Recent storm events have exceeded a two-inch rainfall or more frequent occurrences. It's highly recommended that the amount of storage be increased at a minimum of three inches, and up to five inches shall be considered." So when the June plan came in, they showed five inches and increased it from three to five on the June plan for Area C. Similarly, the runoff coefficient for landscaped areas on the June 22nd plan was 0.25. However, it was subsequently reduced to 0.1 in the October plan. The runoff, the storage amount or the storage requirement in the October plan went from five inches to three inches. On the flip side, the total tributary area increased between the June plan and the September plan. The June plan had 6,900, excuse me, 6,93 square feet, and the October plan had 48,393 square feet. Interestingly enough, the drainage calculations for both plans resulted in the same, same storage volume for both plans. Now, how could that be? One increased the tributary area, but the other, but the plan also decreased a coefficient and lowered the rainfall. So both plans that were submitted, even though coefficients and rainfall storage were adjusted, resulted in the same number of drywells. And that's got to raise the question, why would that be? And that's, it's unclear to me why they would have made that change. If they had used the June coefficients and the same outfall, the same rainfall storage requirement, the, the plan would have tripled in size in terms of storage. So you heard six drywells is what's on the plan today. That would have been 18 drywells using those coefficients. So, so we recognize that the tributary area, watershed was increased, however, the limits of the tributary area are not based on proposed grading and improvements for each lot, which, in my opinion, is warranted and should be engineered on the plan, given the natural topography and the drainage pattern that I just recently discussed. We recommend a fully developed grading and drainage plan be prepared as part of its application so that comprehensive grading plan can be developed for all three lots, which includes a robust stormwater management design to handle more frequent and intensive storm events. This approach will ensure that stormwater runoff generated from the proposed subdivision is maintained onsite with no impacts to downstream properties. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Are you going to submit this in writing?
We can submit everything in writing.
Okay, that would be great, so that we can double-check that calculation that you shot up. Thank you very much.
And I would ask that you include the map when you do, so we can make that part of the record.
Alex, the map that was here when we did the secret thing.
I already about this.
Which was Smith at, you know, all the squires.
Ma'am.
It's disappeared. This is brand-new survey, brand-new map, brand-new calculation of all, of depth and everything. But it is, and I can't find the old map. So if you would check with Derek, I, he was looking for it.
Good evening. Is it okay if I proceed?
Yes.
My name is Linda Margolin. I'm an attorney from the firm of Margolin &amp; Basunder in Ilandia, New York. I'm here on behalf of several residents that live in the vicinity of the subdivision. Nick Aquavella, who's the managing member of 22 Captain's Neck LLC, owning the property at 22 Captain's Neck Road. Luis and Lilian Fernandez, the owners of 65 Captain's Neck Lane. I said road before, but I meant lane. Scott and Mary Mahoney, the owners of 48 Captain's Neck Lane. And Minot Avery, Amory IV, the owner of the large parcel immediately to the east of the proposed subdivision. I've prepared a letter for the board that summarizes all the points, so I'll try and make them quickly so that I don't take up too much of your time. But I wanted to point out that I'm going to be referring to two documents. One is the proposed subdivision plan final plat that I think is dated October 3rd, 2022. And the other is the driveway plan of the same date. What I'm here to tell you on behalf of these property owners is that I do not believe that the Planning Board can approve this final plat based on a number of circumstances. And I'm going to go through them in as quick a fashion as I can. All of these issues either concern whether or not the lot on Captain's Neck Lane, at 62 Captain's Neck Lane, was part of the original application, and also concern the driveway that is proposed to go across that lot and form the access to a public street for Lot 3 of the subdivision. The simplest issue that I want to present to you is the location of the driveway on the Captain's Neck Lane lot, assuming that it's legal. It is, the Village Code defines structure in a way that includes driveways, unless driveways are constructed at a natural grade. As, if you look at this driveway plan, you can see very clearly it's not constructed at natural grade. There's both excavation and fill that will depart, make the driveway depart substantially from natural grade. That's one of the reasons that there's a retaining wall running along one side of the driveway. What is the consequence of that? A structure has, that is an accessory structure, has to abide by the, the setback requirements in the Village Code. While driveways constructed at natural grade are exempt and excluded, driveways that are not constructed at natural grade are included and have to honor the setback. For a lot the size of the 62 Captain's Neck Lane lot, that requires a setback of at least 20 feet from the side yard. The setback looks to be here about one foot. So you cannot approve this unless the applicant were to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get a variance on the side yard setback for this driveway. As I know this board knows, you cannot approve something that is illegal. As I know this board knows, you cannot approve something that is illegal under the code. But why do I say, assuming it's legal? I say that because a driveway is actually an accessory use for the property. It's not a principal use. And the village code allows customary accessory uses. What does it mean to say it's an accessory use? The code says that an accessory use is a subordinate use, building or structure customarily incidental to and located on the same lot occupied by the main use. But this is a driveway that is not accessory to the main use, the residence on the Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane lot. It is intended to be an accessory to the residence that will be erected on Lot Three of the subdivision. It's my position, and I think this is a well-founded position, that this is a use that cannot be permitted under the zoning code without a variance from the zoning board of appeals because it's not a customary accessory use to the principal residential use of the Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane lot. So, um, and my letter explains the analysis a little bit more in terms of which code provisions I'm looking at. But, um, these issues, by the way, did not come up before the zoning board. I can say that because I brought the Article Seventy-Eight against the zoning board decision. I took the appeal and my erstwhile adversary, Mr. Bennett, and I were in front of the Second Department this past Monday. And he quite correctly advised the court that they should consider carefully whether I could argue anything about this issue on the appeal because it had never been raised before the zoning board of appeals. So that's the situation. It was just never brought up before the zoning board and everybody seemed to simply assume that you could put a driveway for another lot on this lot. The same circumstance doesn't exist with respect to the driveway to serve the two lots on Hill Street because the applicant owns all of this property. And this driveway would be accessory to the subdivision that's going there. But, but the situation is different here. What has happened here, and, and I took a careful look at the entire record. As, Mr. Bennett has submitted an application for approval of the final plat. And it's different in one respect from all prior applications that were made either to the planning board or the zoning board because he has included the lot at Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane, which was never included before as one of the parcels that was going to be subject to the subdivision. I think what he did was the right thing because one of the critical elements of a subdivision that this board must consider is how are the lots going to get access to a public street? The idea of filing a plat and not showing an access is just bizarre. But all prior, all prior applications to this board for the sketch plan, for the SECRE and to the zoning board of appeals, the lot at Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane was not included. That's not just a technical problem in terms of, well, we can add it later. Because how can you have approval for a sketch plan as a predicate for approval of a final plan when the sketch plan approval itself didn't include this lot with its necessary easement? By the same token, I believe that the SECRE evaluation, although it mentions in passing the use of this driveway and something about traffic on Captain's Neck Lane, you can look at the list of the properties that were the subject of the application, the subject of the expanded environmental assessment form prepared by Mr. Emelita for the applicant. You can look at the Nelson and Pope completion of the EAF and you will see that the only lots that are listed are Five Fifty and Five Fifty Four Hill Street. The Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane lot is never listed and therefore the kind of thorough analysis that's called for under SECRE never took place. The other aspect of that, and the same thing was true before the zoning board of appeals, is radius notice and posting notice go from the properties that are part of the application. So when this board noticed the public hearing for approval of the sketch plan, the five-hundred foot radius ran from the two Hill Street lots. No radius notice was given to properties that were further away but fell within five-hundred feet of the lot at Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane. And the same thing happened in the zoning board of appeals where the radius notice is two-hundred feet. There, the two-hundred feet radius was swung from the Hill Street lots, but not from the Sixty-Two Captain's Neck Lane lot. And the posting, as far as I can tell, the affidavit of posting indicates one sign. It's Mr. Flanagan's affidavit and he says it's consistent with the code and since only the Hill Street lots were listed, I think we can probably assume that the only sign that was posted was a sign on Hill Street and no sign was posted on Captain's Neck Lane. So it's our position that there is no sketch plan approval, a valid sketch plan approval of the subdivision that's been presented to you for final plat approval. And it's our position that under the regulations governing SECRE, this is a substantive change from what was presented before. And it requires you to either reconsider and amend or rescind your prior negative declaration and reconsider the application with the, all three lots and the proposed use of the Captain's Neck lot, you know, front and center.
Thank you.
The one more thing, just one.
Okay.
Which is, I know you can't make decisions for the zoning board, but I do want to point out that when the zoning board of appeals considers variances for subdivision and it doesn't come to them through a building department, denial of a building permit, New York village law says that the zoning board of appeals in reviewing the application shall request the planning board to provide a written recommendation concerning the proposed variance. I am familiar with the record before the zoning board of appeals. I see no evidence that that was done before and I ask this board to make sure, assuming it goes back to the zoning board, that the zoning board of appeals follows the proper procedure. At this point, I'd like to hand up a letter.
Sure. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'll provide this to Mr. Wallach, maybe you can get copies for the board as well.
Yeah.
I'll walk over there.
Martha, do you want to speak? Okay.
There's somebody in the back.
Good evening. My name is Margal Horn and I live across the street from the proposed building subdivision and I have absolutely no problem with it. It will not create any more traffic coming out onto Captain's Neck. Whatever was there before as far as drainage was there, if, if there are lots created, you just put fill in like most people do when they have low lots. The neighbors that were, uh, that were asked to sign a petition against it are rescinding their signatures. They were called at the time by Mr. Rutttenberg to pay attorney's fees, part of them. So they were solicited and one paid two thousand dollars. I don't know what the other ones paid, but I can tell you that about ten years ago, Mr. Zahuski came to me and showed me the plan of what he wanted to do. And I offered it to Mr. Rutttenberg, subject to the subdivision. I offered it to Alan Glatt, this German girl who since sold her house. I offered it to Mr. Aquavella and they were very interested. Suddenly out of the clear blue sky, an attorney was hired. And it's like ten years ago this has been going on. They've absolutely crucified Mr. Zahuski and they want to buy those lots. Mr. Rutttenberg tried to buy those lots directly, all right? And then Mr. Aquavella is interested, which I said they were interested when they took the maps from me, in having that addition to his lot. Mr. Glatt is interested in having that addition to his lot. The other one, I don't know because it's sold. And this is just the worst thing I've ever seen in my life, the handling of this. Whatever happens, and if Mr. Rutttenberg finally gets what he wants, he's going to sell those parcels to those people and they're just going to add them to their property. What happens to the drainage then? Does it stay the same? Or if you build houses on three lots, big deal, fill it in like most people do. It'll, it will help the environment if that's what's needed, but it's been there for a long time. Has it flooded the whole area? Has it flooded Captain's Neck Lane? No. I have nothing more to say. That's my deal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Gobler?
All right. Good evening. Chris Gobler, professor at Stony Brook University School of Atmospheric Sciences. And just a few points to make about the overall property, some observations. The first one being we've already heard about runoff and we know that everywhere, particularly in the village, is a watershed. So any activity on any property is going to eventually have that water drain, be it surface runoff or even more likely via groundwater, will end up within a coastal ecosystem. And, and therefore, anything happening on a given property, you should expect that that will impact the neighboring region. And of course, we know that in the last several years, that there've been many investigations of nitrogen in particular, nitrogen being a factor that has a strong impact on coastal ecosystems. And there's been more than a half a dozen studies that have recognized that most of the nitrogen entering our coastal waters are coming from wastewater and then secondarily from fertilizer. And we know the impacts that that can have. This is a map of impacts on coastal water bodies, just in a four-month period in 2021, a similar map for 2022, just showing that, you know, many of our coastal water bodies are being impaired and the root cause of that is excessive loading of nitrogen. The different colors here represent different types of what we call harmful algal blooms, with the exception of the dark blue regions, which are areas of low oxygen that are too low to support aquatic life. And just on the harmful algal bloom front, I'll, I'll talk about it momentarily later, but there are essentially two types to consider, the types that make toxins and the types that are harmful or lethal to marine life.
Dr. Gobler, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Are you a neighbor of this?
No.
Okay.
I live in East Quogue.
I just need to understand why you're here because we all understand water quality issues.
Yeah, I'm going to get right to the property right now.
Okay.
That was just my quick intro.
So you're here in opposition to this?
I'm here just to, I'm, I'm just here to present some facts. So I'm, I'm here, but I'm part of, uh, Mr. Bragman's team.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. So presently, the lot has no active septic use. To my knowledge, the, the homes there are not being used. So we're going to have three multi-bedroom homes there. And, you know, multi-bedroom, I've heard up to ten, but it could be even more. And of course wastewater nitrogen loads are dependent on people. Each person can generate ten pounds of nitrogen per year. There's currently not any fertilization going on on the property. I'm sure all the lawns will be fertilized. That's also going to be a nitrogen load. And then more importantly, we've heard about the runoff. Each home represents impervious surface, so there'll be more runoff than going to impervious surfaces there had been before. And all of that's going towards Headie Creek. So showing you here, you can see where the property is on the left. I'm going to talk more about it momentarily. It's a study from Suffolk County, essentially showing what the, what's known as the subwatershed is for Eastern Shinnecog Bay and specifically Headie Creek. The property is just outside of the two-year travel time, so we should expect that it's going to take about two years, maybe three years from the water from this property to reach Headie Creek. And we saw this on the board before, but just showing you, we're really, we're, we're three hundred meters away from where Headie Creek is here and you can see the flow patterns there. It's all going to be directed from this property directly to the headwaters of Headie Creek. This area in particular is already an area that's, the groundwater contains excessive levels of nitrogen. This is data that's in a New York State Department of State report issued in 2017 showing the levels of nitrate. And there's all, we can see already, there's very high levels of nitrogen already in this region. So there's already a hotspot for overload of nitrogen. And again, referring to the Suffolk County subwatershed's plan, this came out just, was just approved in 2020. And the area in question is the highest priority for Suffolk County for mitigating wastewater loads. So looking for those loads to be reduced. The same can be said for the town of Southampton because of the close proximity to Headie Creek. Within that subwatershed study, they're specifically calling for a twenty percent reduction in the amount of nitrogen load to Eastern Shinnecog Bay. And that's considering the entire bay, just as a parenthetical, if they're considered just Headie Creek, that number would be far larger. But specifically calling for a reduction and again, the highest priority of the county. So we know what septic systems do and how they are presently and that they're leaching high levels of nitrogen. We also know that any property will need to have an advanced septic system that gets nitrogen effluent down below nineteen milligrams per liter. And so these are often known as innovative and alternative onsite wastewater treatment units. But one thing I want to very strongly emphasize right now, is shown in this graph, is that on the one hand, these innovative alternative systems result in a significant reduction of nitrogen. So the left bar there is what you expect out of a traditional septic system. The right bar is what you get out of an innovative and alternative system, which is wonderful. That's a sixty percent reduction. But the thing I want to emphasize to you, and the strongest term as possible, is that if you look at the levels of inorganic nitrogen that's in Eastern Shinnecog Bay where the receiving waters are, what we're talking about is that the septic effluent from the IA system will be one hundredfold higher than what you have right now in Headie Creek. And when you have that kind of concentration of nitrogen, it's going to exact a very strong effect on the coastal water body. So the first effect I want to talk about is the marshland that's around the headwaters of Headie Creek. So this is exactly going to be the epicenter where that groundwater goes. You can see, there's a salt marsh around there and I want you to note, there are more than half dozen homes that are right there as well. Now, salt marshes are very important for protecting areas from coastal flooding. What you're actually looking at here is a photograph. You can see the white water in the background, the quiescent water in the front. That quiescent water is actually a salt marsh. And so what it's showing you is that it's taking the brunt of storms and waves, but more importantly, it's blunting against flooding effects. And this is just a picture, but I could show you maps from Hurricane Sandy, for example, where across the South Shore of Long Island, there's peninsulas. And on the, the one side of the peninsula, there are salt marshes intact, the other side, there's not. And what you have is in the areas where the salt marshes are gone, you've got flooding going into the adjacent properties. And the, the, the matter of concern here is that a study that came out just about the time of Hurricane Sandy was shown in the most, in the most influential scientific journal on the planet, Nature. You can see that what's shown here, that essentially this paper demonstrated that overloads of nitrogen destroy salt marshes. The macro view, if you can see what happens on the right in the picture, the view below that is actually a CAT scan of the roots of the, of the salt marshes. And what it's showing is that the overload of nitrogen breaks down those roots and results in the calving off of the salt marsh, putting the properties around the area with the salt marsh that's compromised at risk for flooding and enhanced flooding. And that's why in shortly after Hurricane Sandy, the DEC issued this, this report that essentially said, "We need to reduce nitrogen loading to protect coastal communities from flooding." The other thing I want to point out is the impact specifically on Headie Creek. Recognize Headie Creek, again, three hundred meters away, two-year travel time. And this is the eastern flank of the Shinnecog Nation, right? So, you know, we're, we're, we're neighboring that property. That property is used and Headie Creek is used by the nation for fishing. And we should expect therefore that anything that's happening to this property will be affecting Headie Creek and the, the suitability of that water body for the Shinnecog Nation. And so again, back to that, that Department of State study that was done in 2017, this may be a little esoteric, but the numbers you see in blue here, and I apologize if they're a little fuzzy, are what are known as the residence time of the water. How long does it take via tidal flushing for the water in a given water body to flush out? And despite the very tiny nature of Headie Creek, it takes almost eleven days for the water in there to work its way out. That is a terrible situation for what we call eutrophication because what that means is the nitrogen load from this property that I just discussed, when it discharges there, will sit in that water body and work its way back and forth for eleven days, almost two weeks. And when that happens, that's the exact situation where you can get the nitrogen exacting an effect on the water body. Just as a very quick contrast. Just as a very quick contrast, if this nitrogen is being discharged into the, into the Shinnecock Ocean inlet, if it were to be affected away, it would be of no concern. It'd be gone on the tide. We're talking about two, two-week impact here. And within this water body, we have measured harmful algal blooms. So just to highlight that. And we know those harmful algal blooms get more intense and more toxic with more nitrogen. So, for example, we've detected the dinoflagellate alexandrium in Hetty Creek. Alexandrium makes saxitoxin. Saxitoxin is a neurotoxin that's 1,000 times more potent than cyanide. And it's present at elevated levels in Hetty Creek. And prior research that my laboratory group has published, shown in this publication from 2010, has shown that when you add more nitrogen to water that has alexandrium in it, the water, you get more of these toxic cells and you get more of the toxin because the toxin contains nitrogen. So the cells can therefore make more toxin. A second harmful algal bloom to consider that we know, we've detected and quantified in Hetty Creek, is known as cochleidinian polycreekoides. The pejorative, the otherwise known as rust tide. It's been around for nearly two decades. It's an ichthyotoxic harmful algal bloom. Ichthyotoxic meaning it kills fish. And we've seen fish kills in and around Hetty Creek during these events. And it's also been known to kill bivalves. And just like the other harmful algal bloom, this is a study that got cut off here, but I can submit the slides, published in 2012, that showed this particular harmful algae benefits from nitrogen more frequently than other types of phytoplankton out there. We've been able to repeat this result since then. Again, essentially meaning that the additional nitrogen load from this property entering Hetty Creek in less than two years, because of the only 300-meter distance, will intensify both of these types of toxic algal blooms. And then a final thing to consider, auction conditions. We've noted very low levels of auction within Hetty Creek in the past. And those conditions get worse when there's more nitrogen because the algal blooms get more intense. There's more carbon from the algae that breaks down and consumes oxygen below the levels that are the standards by the New York State DEC. And just so wrapping up, I've shown you that excessive nitrogen loads will very quickly make their way to Hetty Creek. They'll have an effect on salt marshes there. Unfortunately, because of the very extended residence time of the water body there, that makes this ecosystem highly vulnerable to that nitrogen. It has two weeks to exact this effect. And what we should expect is that additional excessive nitrogen from this subdivision will result in intensification of the two types of toxic algal blooms there and a further reduction in the auction conditions, impairing the fish habitats, which are an important part of the Shinnecock Nation's property. So that's my presentation. And I'll submit a document in writing as well.
Thank you for your comments.
Sir, I appreciate that you'll be doing that, but I'd suggest and certainly leave it to the board. You've, by my count, there were about 15 to 16 different exhibits there. So anything in writing, I would appreciate you include.
I can submit the full slide deck and the references as well.
Because I think the engineers will certainly want to see that as well, the board.
Happy to do that.
And I hope the residents of Captain's Neck Lane will start installing AI systems.
Yes.
To help with this problem in Hetty Creek.
Yes, fully agree.
Great. Sir, in the blue shirt, did you want to speak?
No, I'll adjust.
Okay. Because I think that's it.
Thank you for letting me return. I just want to.
Excuse me, Chair. Excuse me, Chair. We do have, oh, no, he just put his hand down. We have a Mario, yeah, Mario does want to speak, a Mario Cavallotero.
Okay.
His hand is up. It has been up for quite a long time.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the waiting room?
There are.
There are, but nobody else has their hand up. Did anybody else want to speak from the waiting room? That's it, just the one.
Mario's coming in now.
Okay.
Mayor, your microphone is muted.
We can't hear her. Tell them we can't.
Yes, now I have it. Okay, thank you so much. No, I just wanted to make a brief comment. I'm a resident of the cross street of Captain's Neck, south of that property.
That's right.
And on Merrily Drive. And I was very interested in the presentation. And of course, I'm rather worried from, from what I heard, from the fact that there's going to be this subdivision in three plots where there should be only, only two. I'm not a lawyer and I will not get into the details of what has been discussed, even if it was very interesting. I just would like to observe that it seems to me that the only person, the only neighbor that seemed to be in favor of this project is Ms. Margot Horn, who is a real estate agent. So maybe she has an interest. She accused people of having ulterior motives, while I think that the motive of the people involved, that are all my neighbors, are just to preserve the quality of Southampton. Not just from an environmental viewpoint, but also from the quality of what the houses and what the general neighborhood would look about. So, you know, I wonder whether there is an ulterior motive into the very heated intervention of Ms. Horn, being a real estate agent and being more interested in having maybe three houses to sell rather than two. But that, of course, is just a side observation. So I would recommend the board to keep that in mind while they will examine the general situation. For the rest, my position is that that third lot should not happen. Captain's Neck is very crowded. Already, we have a huge problem of traffic. I think that even adding one more external road would not be good. And to crowd the properties, properties that are supposed to be, you know, is not a good idea. It's not good for the estate section, for the older estate section. I appreciate people like Mr. Rottenberg, for example, that kept a very large property without doing any, any development and is preserving the land and has a tiny house. My neighbor on Merrily Drive, my neighbor to the east, ended up building a huge house on two acres and destroyed all the plants. This is something that is happening more and more in Southampton. I think this board has the responsibility of keeping an eye on what is the interest of the town looking forward, of the village looking forward, and should send a very clear message that certain things should not happen any longer. Thank you, that's all I had to say.
Thanks for your comments. And excuse us for forgetting that you were in the waiting room.
No, no, not at all. I'm fine, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, Jeff, you're up.
Thank you. I appreciate your letting me step back up to the podium. And I'll, I'll be pretty quick here. I just want to link what Mike Kefir told you about the driveway and what Dr. Gobler is saying about Hetty Creek to your subdivision review standards. Because you do have preservation of environment standards that are enumerated in 97-39. And they're fairly straightforward, common sense. They require the board to preserve and protect the natural terrain and the natural features. I would suggest that that Captain's Neck driveway does the opposite. You don't preserve the natural terrain and features by having a road bounded in on one side by a retaining wall and on the other side by 108 feet of steel sheeting. And it also requires a good deal of excavation. If you look at that roadway profile, you'll see there's a hill that they have to take out to get the slope workable. And that, that requirement comports with the new master plan, the comprehensive plan, which links stormwater runoff to the problem of harmful algae blooms, which is why Dr. Gobler is here and why we're concerned about runoff. The location of those six drywells, which I think are undercounted, and I would hope that the board would require the applicant to come back with a clear calculation for a five-inch rainfall with a reasonable runoff coefficient. The, the location of those drywells is suggestive of the fact that that's an area that's going to get hit with a lot of surface water runoff. And one of the board members, it may have been you, you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, indicated, well, it's going to go down to Captain's Neck eventually. Well, if you clear a path for it and you have a paved road, yes, it's going to, it's more likely to go down to Captain's Neck. And when it goes to Captain's Neck, it's going to Hetty Creek.
That's not what I was saying. I was saying that when it hits a hard surface, it's going to head straight down Captain's Neck rather than crossing Captain's Neck, over a curb, onto somebody's property and into Hetty Creek.
Well, it's going to, as, as Dr. Gobler has advised me, if it's in the watershed to Hetty Creek, it's going to Hetty Creek.
It's going to the ocean eventually.
Another, another of the, of the policies in, in your subdivision code require you to preserve and protect natural drainage patterns. And it seems to, to us that this driveway location going to Captain's Neck does just the opposite. It would be much better in terms of the environment and protecting Hetty Creek and the surrounding surface waters if the, instead of drainage drywells, it was the location for a natural drainage planting, something like a rain garden, which your code authorizes the planning board to impose as a condition where it's appropriate to protect water quality from surface runoff. In addition, your subdivision regulations also authorize you or require you to protect surface waters, which is why Dr. Gobler made the comments that he made. And I think the link between the building, the clearing, and impacts to Hetty Creek are pretty clear. A two-year travel time has made Hetty Creek one of the high priority areas under the comprehensive plan that just was adopted in, in 2022. Identifies that area surrounding Hetty Creek as a, as a priority area for water quality improvement. And it identifies the wetlands surrounding there and the fact that it's in a 100-year floodplain. So this is not, this is not a long-term problem. This is a problem that's already upon us. And a two-year travel time is a very short travel time. And anything you could do to protect that water body by not permitting this kind of adjustment in the drainage pattern, I would suggest is, comports with your policies and with the comprehensive plan. Which does note, the comprehensive plan notes on page 77 that harmful algal blooms are a serious problem in the village of Southampton, which is why Dr. Gobler came in to make his comments. And, and you're allowed to protect against any other kind of degradation to flora, fauna, or water quality. We think that, you know, given what it takes to build that driveway where it is, it looks like, it, it's not, the, the location isn't dictated by terrain that suggests it's a good place for it. I think it's more the result of wanting a Captain's Neck address, to speak frankly. We think that moving the, moving the three, the accesses to the two landlocked lots, if you, if there are eventually three lots, over to the eastern side is a better location. And it would enable you to protect Hetty Creek and prevent that surface water runoff that Alan McFarland has been noting really for years now in front of this board. So we would suggest that that's one possibility. We'd like to see the correct drainage calculations. We'd like to see the driveway extended onto Lot 3 so that you have the clearing. That's something the board asked for that the applicants haven't given you to date. We'd like to, we, we think the easements, we don't like easements, nor does the master plan, the comprehensive plan. But we think relocating them to the east is a better idea. It doesn't, it doesn't burden my client's property. And secondly, this idea of using a property that's outside the subdivision is a very risky precedent for you. It's going to invite copycats. And eventually, it's going to invite conflict because ultimately, the same person is not going to own that Captain's Neck lot and own the, the Lot, Lot 3. It's going to be stranger and stranger. And that's when you get into these cases where there are conflicts over easements. So we, we don't, we, and, and the idea that you're using a piece of land outside the subdivision to effectuate a road in the subdivision may open the door to other people who offer money to a neighbor and say, hey, I'll give you money, give me an easement, and then maybe can squeeze out an extra lot that he couldn't ordinarily fit. What I'm saying is, you can't, you can't make that Captain's Neck driveway work without using a lot that's not included in the subdivision. That is not a good precedent for you going forward. So we're hoping that you can keep the hearing open. I'll be happy to submit written comments from myself and the two other witnesses. And with that, I thank you for your time. And thank you for putting up with my excessive use of your time in my first round.
You've been heard.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you, do you want to say anything?
Sure, just, I just wanted to actually thank Linda for providing us with a copy of her letter that she submitted this evening. And it asks that anyone who submits anything in writing provide us with a copy so we can adequately respond. It saves time for all of us in the long run by doing that. So I would just ask that if you are keeping it open for written submissions, that we be provided copies of everything so we can respond in a timely manner to you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I had the opportunity to communicate with Kathy Eisman about turnaround time in terms of review and things of that nature. I would certainly want the opportunity to review documents in writing. I think a lot has been said tonight. I would suggest that the matter be held open for that review and to allow Nelson and Pope to do the review that they deem necessary and to prepare responses they deem necessary. From a selfish point of view, the, the first meeting in March, I have a conflict. I'll be in a different village. And I'm wondering if perhaps this could go to the second meeting in March, which would be the 20th. I would just ask, I, I know that the board will want responses timely and anybody who would. Counsel, can you give us a sense? I assume that, that these are things that could be prepared rather quickly for submission to the board. How soon do you think you could have your writings in so that people? Would two weeks be sufficient, Chairman? I think that would then leave, if, if this is put over to the 20th of March. So today is the 6th plus 14 is the 20th of February. That would leave a month for review.
Is that enough?
Let me just check with Ms. Eisman if I may. Actually, I think she's on. So Ms. Eisman, can you just give us a sense if that gives you sufficient time for review?
It depends on what we get, but we would certainly make every effort to get that done within a couple of weeks once we receive it.
And I, one of the reasons why I think the 20th is a good date, and I realize that we're dealing with the applicant's time. But we're, I'm a little concerned about a quorum on the 6th. I've already heard that some people are, might not be able to be here. I'm one of them.
If the opposition is submitting information within two weeks, may we have another two weeks after that to respond before the meeting? Because we would like to be able to have.
We're looking at almost six weeks if we, if we agree on the 20th of March.
So we would have two weeks beyond whatever their submission date is to submit to you. So you'll have an additional two weeks before the March 20th meeting.
Yes.
And just so long as counsel for everybody understands that all of this is going to depend upon the review time that Kathy Eisman and her team will need to review and respond to this board.
Yes.
In fairness to everybody, so.
And also, we, we have a new board member that, again, it's not the applicant's problem. But I would like Mark to have the time to really get up to speed and, and digest all these issues that were brought up today. He, he is up to speed. We, we've spent a lot of time with him on the application. But there was a lot of information that he's probably, hasn't been hit with in the past. So if you are agreeable to the 20th, that would be.
That would work.
That would be great.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chair. I'm not sure if it's a typo or not, but on the agenda, it's showing that we have a meeting on March 14. So I'm not sure how, I don't know if we have a set schedule for March. But Alex, you see that conflict there?
No, on, on the agenda, I see a meeting on the 6th and the 20th of March.
Okay, I must be looking at a mistake. I apologize. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have a conflict.
Okay.
Thank you. And I would just ask, anything that's submitted to the Building Department for the Board, we take in seven hard copies and digital copies to distribute to the board members and make available online through you as well.
Could you repeat that?
And any submissions that we take for applications, we have seven hard copies that so we can distribute to the board members as a file and a digital submission as well because we make it available online to the board members.
I will take care of that.
Thank you.
So you want hard copies and electronic?
Okay, so we have to vote to keep the.
Yes, I was going to ask if there's then a motion to keep the matter open for all purposes.
I'd like to move that we keep this hearing open for continued public submission and to give our consultants time to process the information. And it would be until March 20.
March 20, okay.
March 20, okay.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that we make a motion to adjourn 51 Pond Lane, since we have it on the agenda, make one of these.
Okay, we should, we have to move it.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd like to move that we adjourn the issue of 51 Pond Lane, Town of Southampton, until...
March 20?
March 20.
March 20?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And is there then a motion to close? I don't believe there's any further business.
Were there, were there minutes that needed to get approved? I had a note here about the minutes for December 19th. I don't know if everyone has answered either one.
I did. Did everybody else?
Yes.
I did.
Have you kind of checked to see them?
I saw them.
I have all the, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Alex. You guys made a motion on Hetty, you made a motion on Town of Southampton for March 20th, but on Hetty Creek, I did not have, that we had a motion approved, because we last met on 12/19.
Oh, I see, all right. I'm sorry about that. There was the applicant's...
And you see, it does say March 14th there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see what you mean. There, there was a request from the applicant. They did request March 14th type of lead by letter, they had been mistaken about the schedule. So I would suggest that the board adjourn that lot line modification to March 20th, and that I can continue reviewing that case. Thanks, Senator. I actually...
No, no, that's fine, we just need a motion for that, and I have accepted all of the corrections. Willa, I did get your comments, Alan, I got your comments, as well as Kathy's and Jeff's and Alex's.
So which date was that?
12/19 can be sent out as approved, if you guys approve it.
Okay, first, let's deal with Hetty Creek. I'd like to move that we adjourn, this application is requested by the applicant, to our March 20th meeting.
I thought you did that. I'll second it, I'll vote for it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We've done it twice.
I think we have. Okay, I'd also like to move that we accept into the official record the meetings of December 19th, 2022. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
And I'll remind the board and anyone else who's listening that there is no February 20th meeting because of the President's Day holiday, so we'll meet next, as planned, on March 6.
6.
Okay. All right.
Is there then a motion to close?
Well, I was just gonna do that.
I'll move that we close the meeting.
Okay, I'll second it.